Welcome, Winthrop, to the Winthrop Town Council meeting of December 1st, 2020. This meeting will be held remotely. It will be shown live on WCAT and it will be replayed during the week. The call-in number for tonight's meeting is 1-646-558-8656. The identification number is 819-90810669. That call-in number and ID can be used for public comment and for the public hearings. I will now call the meeting to order. Will you please have a roll call?
Councilor Jarrow.
Yes.
Council Flockhart. Council DeMarco.
Here.
Council Christopher. Council Honan.
Here.
Council LaConte.
Yeah, I'm here.
Council Farino.
President.
Vice President Littieri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Here.
Thank you.
We have a full attendance. I know Barbara is on the phone. I spoke to her earlier and Peter is unmuted now. Do you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Larissa, do you have that? And Council DeMarco, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Of course. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we all remain standing, please, please, I remain standing for a moment of silence. Winthrop again, this, this meeting has lost a very valued member of the community. Last night, we lost Amy Gallagher to a heart attack. And Amy was a go-getter in the town of Winthrop. She worked at the middle school, Special Education Department, working with special education students. But that was just the beginning. She worked exclusively, I'm sure Terry's gonna say a couple words too later, but she worked on that food bank. When we first opened the food bank and we were trying to get food out to everybody that needed food, she was there every day, collecting food, packing food, and giving it out and delivering it. She's also very active in St. John's Food Bank and, and many other places in town. So a moment of silence, please, as we remember Amy Gallagher, excuse me. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 24, 2020 meeting?
Motion.
Motion's been made. Council Farino, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? Are there any amendments? Are there any additions? Every none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Councilor Jarrow.
Yes.
Council Flockhart. Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council LaConte.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Vice President Littieri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Minutes are approved. We now go into general information. And the general information, I'd just like to point out that even though Thanksgiving week was fairly safe, we still managed from last Wednesday till Monday night to gain 51 positive tests in the town of Winthrop, which is not a very good record since then. Today, as released this afternoon, I'm sure Meredith will add something a little later under the Town Manager's Report, but we had another six as of noon time today. So we had 57 since last Wednesday to today. And that is not a great number. And I hope people will start or continue to wear your masks, social distance, wash your hands, avoid large crowds, please. We don't want to have to shut down the town. And I know the governor's thinking they're shutting down the state and I hate to see that happen. I'd like to keep us going if we can go the right way and start lowering these numbers. 57 is not a good number for one week. Okay, we're lucky tonight to have with us Town Council Auditor, Dick Kingston, to give us a report on the water sewer funding, which we've had quite a few questions over the last month since the bills have gone out about water sewer and Dick is here to answer them. And, go ahead, Dick.
I, I think Anna had a couple of slides that she wanted to show before I got into my part of it. Anna, did you, do you have something?
You're muted, yeah.
So, yeah, you're good now. Sorry about that. Thank you. I just wanted to check with Council President. I think typically the tax rate classification hearing is typically started, has been at the beginning of these meetings in previous years. So just wanted to check before Dick and I launch into the water sewer presentation, if there is any interest in doing that hearing first, if that is possible to take that out of order. On the agenda tonight.
Is there a motion by councilor to take the public hearing out of order?
Motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to take the public hearing on tax classification out of order. Any discussion on that? Every none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Councilor Jarrow.
Yes.
Council Flockhart. Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council LaConte.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Vice President Littieri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion is passed. We revert to the continued public hearing from last month. And that public hearing is on the tax classification for fiscal year '21. I know it's with us with Steve Roach, the Deputy Assessor, and also the Chairman of the Board of Assessors, Alan Maruzzi. We'll let you guys go first. Again, the call-in number for the public hearing is 1-646-558-8656 and an ID number of 819-90810669. It's your opportunity to call in on the public hearing. All right, please, who's going? Steve?
Yes, thank you, councilors, for the courtesy. I appreciate it. So, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Very good. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, Town Manager Fiaison. I'm Stephen Robes, the Deputy Assessor. We are fortunate to be joined by Alan Maruzzi, our great Chairman of the Board of Assessors. We appreciate his service. He's a great chairman. There have been handouts I sent over to Denise Quist. I'm not sure if Denise was able to forward those.
I did forward them.
Thank you, Denise. As you know, the purpose of this hearing is to establish a, a tax levy percentage and the minimum residential factor. So to review how the, how we propose the, the new tax rate and how it was developed, this is another interim year valuation. We have two more years before our revow in '23, according to the new Municipal Modernization Act. So this requires that we, the sales occurred in 2019, which we all know is a pretty strong year for all the sales in Winthrop, singles, multis, et cetera, potentially possibly excluding the commercial area. But so the LA, we put in all of our data into the gateway form and we sent it into the DOR. And our LA 15 interim year adjustment form has, that's all the sales, all the data that ultimately gives us an idea on where our values will be for FY '21. So that was reviewed and actually approved by the DOR. So that's, that's a good thing. So based upon the sales from 2019, the average single-family value is now 501,249, which represents a 0.6% increase over last year, which was at 498. So a slight variation there. And the average single-family tax bill is now 635,55, or about a 1% increase over last year, or approximately $70 over, over last year. So, and that represents a 6%, a 6 cent increase over last year's rate. So the proposed tax rate, again, this is uncertified by the DOR, this is $12.68. Last year was $12.62. So although we're down slightly last year regarding new growth, considering what, what everyone's been through, it was pretty strong. Where our new growth was, is that $17,600,000 in value or about 192,500 in real tax dollars. So that's good considering the pandemic and, you know, people's reluctance to maybe start new projects and have builders come into their home and, and all that. So I think, I think that's a pretty strong number. And it continues to be mostly with the, the condo conversion, which, you know, Winthrop with the many 2 and 3, 4 family dwellings are, continue to be bought at a fairly high price. They're renovated and then sold at a much higher price per unit. And that's a good thing for the town. So, and there, there is some new construction and then the smaller, you know, combined projects equate to that $17,600,000 new growth. And the building permit applications continue to be steady, even though, as I say, as I mentioned, you know, people seem to have a, you know, are really vested in, in Winthrop, in their own homes. They're making improvements there while the market remains strong. I mean, we're competing with East Boston River and some of these other communities where, you know, the people are priced right out of the market. And in Winthrop, they may be able to afford a, you know, a single-family home or a condominium that might be another 10% or 20% higher in one of those other locations. So thankfully, the building permit applications continue to be steady. Denise Quist sent, I'm sure circulated the memo from our Board of Assessors recommending that we retain the uniform tax rate for FY '21. And that's, that's the presentation for the classification here in FY '21. Thank you, councilors.
Is there any questions, any of the public on to have questions?
I don't see any hands up at this time.
No public questions? How about councils? Any councils have questions?
Council President.
Yes.
The Finance Committee meeting did meet earlier and Steve was actually on our call also. And we did have a positive recommendation coming out of Finance on a uniform rate.
Okay, and that will be taken up under all business as far as the vote?
Yes.
Is there any other questions of Steve or Alan? Councilor Jarrow.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Roach and, and Mr. Maruzzi for joining us. Just a quick question. You mentioned that the town's major source for new growth was these condo conversions. Do you see that? So to me, that seems like a fixed sort of, like, is the well drying up on that? I guess that's what I'm trying to ask. Because there's only so many multifamily homes in town that can be converted into condos. Is there any risk, you think, of that potentially drying up and our new growth numbers sort of dwindling? And, you know, I guess what that would mean for us is we would need to explore other avenues for new growth, so.
Frankly, I, I see it, you know, the trend continues. There's still, you know, a wealth of multifamily buildings in the town. I'm sure people are probably knocking on their door to acquire their property, but folks are holding on this, to some of these buildings. So there's, let's just say there's an ample supply and I don't see, I mean, I don't have a crystal ball, but I see this market continuing, as I say, with the competition of area, other, other area communities. You know, I can, I consider it, considering we have a new high school, new middle school, you know, great place to raise a family. I, I see it as a real bargain compared to the other communities. And I think that's gonna continue.
You know, Steve, when I walk around town with my little granddaughter in the carriage, there's a lot of exterior remodeling going on. You know, gorgeous exterior siding, you know, landscaping.
Yes.
A lot, more so than past years. I think people are investing, you know. People are not traveling. Whether they're condos or not. Right. People are not traveling, so they're staying home and they're investing in their houses. And it's wonderful, driving around town, you see everybody is upgrading. And Winthrop is looking very good. Winthrop is looking really good with all the work that's going on. I think a big factor too is just the, the mortgage rates are at an all-time low. So people are just taking money out, remodeling the house, and they're actually saving money because their mortgages are lower. Absolutely. Is anyone else having any questions? No other questions? No other public has come on? Then I will attend a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. No, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Councilor Jarrow.
Yes.
Council Flockhart. Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council LaConte.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Vice President Littieri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Public hearing is closed.
Thank you, councilors. Thank you.
You're welcome to say if you like, but you are discharged if you'd like. Okay, guys. Have a good holiday. Thank you. Take care. Yeah. Bye-bye. Okay, let's go back now to general information and recommendations. Again, we have Anna Friedman and Dick Kingston, Town Council Auditor, to report on the water and sewer funding.
Thank you, Council President, and much appreciated for the council conducting that hearing out of order. So before Dick Kingston provides an update to the community on how things are going for the current year with our water sewer collections, I'm just gonna provide some very brief introductory material. I know that there is always a heightened interest in our water sewer rates. And I know that it, it can be a little bit complicated to talk about, so I just wanted to provide a couple of brief sort of foundational notes for everyone so that Dick's going through his presentation, that folks have this sort of baseline so that we can make sure everyone is following along with us. So I'm gonna share my screen. Hopefully that's enabled, but please. And give me one, whoop, give me one moment. Sorry, let me stop sharing till I get my other presentation up. Let's see. Too many things open. Please start. Okay, one second here. Now I can share screen. Okay. Can folks see that? Can folks see their presentation hopefully?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So I just wanted to give, like I said, some very, very, very high-level sort of foundational notes for everyone on our water sewer fund. So our water sewer fund is an enterprise fund, which means it's intended to be a self-sustaining fund. It, it provides the infrastructure to pay for the, for the water and sewer services that are provided to the community. The XY '21 budgeted revenues and expenses are a little over 10.3 million. And so what are the expenses really quickly in that fund? There are department costs, such as personnel and other operational costs associated with administering the services in the fund. That's around a third of the cost. There are debt service, so this is the payments that we make for funds that we borrowed to do infrastructure projects, and those are the payments that we're making to pay back those funds. That's around 16%. And then one, and then the largest component for the expense is an assessment that we're charged by the MWRA. As a community that receives its water through the MWRA, we have to participate in paying for that, for the cost that the MWRA encourages to provide, to provide that water. The revenue is primarily user charges. So it's, we're charging folks to use, to use the water sewer. So it's, when we are looking at the rate, and Dick Kingston will go into this in a lot more detail, we need to, we need to make sure that the revenues that are coming in fully support the expenses of the fund. As an enterprise fund, it needs to be in balance, just same as our general fund at the end of the year. It's supposed to be in balance. So we need to live within the, we need to live within our revenues there. Our revenues should match our expenses. So to inform their rate, when we look at their rate each year, when we're building the budget, and to determine what the rate would need to be to cover the expenses, we look at, have to look at the usage, we then have to look at what's built, and we have to look at what's been collected. And Dick will go into a lot more about how these things are looking for this year and what that means. Those are all really important criteria for our rate when we look at our rate. And just as I noted, the revenues must be sufficient to support your budgeting expenses for the operation of the enterprise fund, the debt service for previously approved capital, infrastructure projects, and MWRA assessment, and that budget development for the enterprise fund is part of the annual budgeting process that the town goes through each year for all of its budgeted funds. So why don't you just really quickly talk about the MWRA assessment? Because that's the biggest component of the expenditures. And there's sort of a specific additional element to that assessment this year, which I think Dick will touch on in his presentation as well. So we have to pay, as I said, we have to pay this assessment to MWRA. And we, there is a water assessment and a sewer assessment. Our water assessment was a little, a little under $2 million. It was a 4.8% increase over last year. And our sewer assessment is around 3.7 million and it's, it's a little under, it's a small decrease from FY '20. The total assessment is over $5.6 million. And so one of the things to note that's gonna be important through the rest of this year and as we're gearing up for our FY '22 budget conversations, is that the MWRA provided some community financial relief and rate mitigation for FY '21 in light of COVID-19 and the associated financial crisis. So they provided lower assessments that had been planned previously based on some additional resources that they identified on their end through some programming, I believe, in collaboration with the state. So when that, when we had initially proposed the Town Manager's Budget in April, we were expecting a larger assessment. And so we actually initially thought that the rate would have to be closer to a dollar or potentially more going into FY '21 to accommodate the costs in the, in the fund. However, when the MWRA was able to lower our assessment, we in turn also were able to lower the rate increase that was passed on to the consumers in Winthrop. So that reduction was, was passed on to the rate payer in Winthrop. What's very important to note is that we are uncertain if similar rate relief will occur in FY '22 from the MWRA. So we don't know if we will be in the same position to accommodate, you know, such an adjustment for next year. And then really quick, this is a lot of text, but wanted to just let folks know how the MWRA sets their rates. And so just to be really clear, this methodology on this page is not how Winthrop sets its rates. It is how the MWRA sets its own rates that we then are charged and then our costs have been also added on top of that. And this then informs what we then need to pay so that we can then work on our own rate for the, for Winthrop's water sewer fund rates. So for the water rates, it's a sort of a cleaner, it's a cleaner methodology. It's a look back to the previous year. It doesn't say here, but it's identified on some other, other resources from the MWRA that it also includes the share, your sort of share of the, of the, of the water usage compared to other communities in the MWRA. And I can show you quickly where we can see that. Sewer rates are much more complicated from the assessment. They are also computed on a proportional allocation basis. They also use other, other feedback, other inputs such as population, an allocation of debt service, peak wastewater flow and average concentration, proportion of population that's served by the local sewer system, and the proportion of the community census population to the total census population of sewer system. So that is a more, much more complicated analysis that has a lot more inputs in it. But just wanted folks to know that we have these, these two assessments that we get from the MWRA combined, over 55% of the budget that we need to accommodate in the, the water sewer fund each year, and what kind of goes into how that rate, how, what the MWRA charges, MWRA charges us changes from year to year, and what that means then for the way that we have to set the rate on our end. So this is an extremely complicated slide, and I don't want folks to get overwhelmed by this. I tried to break this down into component parts, but somehow it actually made it a little more confusing. So I want to direct your attention to just two things really quick on this slide, which is the charts, the line charts on the right here. I'm gonna use my mouse right here. The green is Winthrop's water use this year. So as you can see, folks are at home. Folks aren't at work necessarily. They're working from home. They're using more water. As you can see, in last year, and this, and just so folks know, this is in a calendar year. So this is January to right now. And then the blue line is last calendar year. This is 2019. As you can see, Winthrop was working to try to conserve water that year. I know that folks had tried to make an effort to do, to conserve. And you can see that that was, that folks were conserving based on their previous year. But what I also want to draw your attention to is that while Winthrop has been conserving, at least for calendar year 2019, prior to when COVID hit, despite that happening down here, it might be cut off in your screens, I apologize if it is, but down here, this bar, this bar graph right here is showing that our sort of share of the, all of the MWRA usage, despite conservation efforts last year, our share of the pie, that whole pie of an MWRA community amongst others, is going up. And so what that means is that when Winthrop was using less water, even when, when Winthrop was using less water, there were other communities still using, they were using so much less water that our share continued to grow. I hope I explained that well. But you can see it here that here's our change in our system share, that it, it, there's no, there has not been a decrease since going from calendar year '16 to '16. So despite those efforts, other communities are conserving more, which means that we are bearing a larger share of the pie. So when it comes time to do our assessment, it means that our assessment continues to grow despite those efforts. So I don't want to get into the rest of this, but happy to, if any councilors or anyone have questions about this after, happy to go back to this. But why don't you just kind of give folks a visual to understand? Because it's very confusing when you know that if folks are working to conserve, why the heck is our assessment still going up? It's because Winthrop is not conserving as much as other communities. So this becomes even more important for this current year because it's, folks are not necessarily in Boston, Boston is an MWRA community. Folks are not necessarily in Boston that work all day. They're at home in the more residential communities. So if usage is up in residential communities such as Winthrop, but its usage is down in more commercial communities like Boston, that means that our share will likely continue to continue to rise. So that means that we can likely expect, you know, continued increase in our assessment going into next year. And it may be cut off at the bottom here. I don't know if it, if you all can see it. But it basically says, this is based on year-to-date water use through October. FY '22 water assessments will be based on share of water use through December 2020. And it says that this is preliminary information. So wanted to just let you know about that. And also wanted to let you know that we are also working to procure a study on multiple matters related to the water sewer rate. We know that there's, you know, extensive interest in having a better understanding because Winthrop's average rate is, is higher than many of its other MWRA community peers. So there are a couple of reasons for that. And I think we better get into that once we have, have a study put together that could be more comprehensive for folks. But the things that we're looking at and that we're looking to work on with an outside entity on this is the rate structure analysis. So Winthrop does not have a tiered water rate, has a combined water sewer rate. State statute actually indicates, actually indicates the community should have a tiered water rate. So we don't have that right now. So it would be, we are interested in asking an outside consultant to please look at that and let us know what that would look like if Winthrop were to do that. Also looking at things like how we charge quarterly-based charges, looking at something that we don't have. Some communities provide hardship waivers. So providing a deep dive on the structure of the rate and also looking at some other issues that are pertinent to the cost associated with the fund, the water loss. So we have aged infrastructure here. Our Public Works Department, our Water Sewer Department does a great job of actually going above Our public works department, our water sewer department does a great job of actually going above and beyond what's even required for checking leaks. And I know Director Tal can answer any questions that folks have about that. But we go, we do more than what is required to check for leaks, but we do have it, we do have very old infrastructure. And we are working to update that infrastructure, but there may be something there that folks from the outside can identify to, you know, to help us prioritize resources there. There were times when Winthrop did not increase their rate, a couple of years, there were no rate increases. And so part of why Winthrop had some rate increases was because we were basically running a deficit. But we were transferring money out of our reserves to mitigate any rate increases, which has kind of caused, caused an issue with having to kind of up in the rate to make up for that. Because that was using on, I was using on-time resources, so it's important ongoing. I also want to have someone look at meter, metering, the status of meters. And also looking at municipal accounts, we abate our town accounts. And so perhaps there's a different way for us to, to accommodate those charges in a way that may make more sense. And so we just want to folks to know that we are deeply researching these issues and we are working to bring someone on who can look into these with us. And we hope to have a report from someone from the outside for later this winter, early spring during the budget process that can help inform those conversations. And then I want to kick it back, I want to kick it over to the town council auditor who's going to talk about where we are for this year. And I appreciate everyone bearing with me, I just wanted to give folks sort of that kind of foundational background of some of the, I'm going to stop sharing.
As Anna said, the, feel free to jump in and ask any questions. I don't feel like this is a presentation, if this works as a workshop, then that's, that's fine by me. So I don't mind being interrupted or interjected at a point. So as Anna said, the sewer revenue budget is funding by, funded by various types of revenues. Most, it's rates, liens, committed interest, tax lien penalties and interest. The vast majority is from the rates and the associated liens, and that's about ninety-eight percent. So the two thousand twenty-one water rates were based on the usage in fiscal year two thousand twenty. The rate went up seventy-five cents from twenty-two ninety to twenty-three sixty-five. And, and that's seventy-five percent represents a three point two eight percent rate increase. When, when I did a calculation of what I thought that the two thousand twenty-one rate should be, I thought it should be a dollar even with the decrease in the assessment. Because the, the revenue, the, the budget revenues needed went up by two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in fiscal, from fiscal year twenty to twenty-one. And there was a revenue shortfall in the prior year of about a hundred twenty thousand dollars. And so you needed to generate three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars worth of new revenues. Well, a, a dollar on the rate sent usually means about four hundred and thirty-five dollars under, under two thousand twenty usage. A dollar means about four hundred and thirty-five thousand in, in new billings. And you generally only collect about eighty-eight percent of that. So in order to generate three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, a, a dollar would have gotten you just a little bit of free cash, not a lot, but a little bit of free cash over it. But given the circumstances, the appetite wasn't there for, and, and understand that we saw, wasn't there for a dollar rate increase. Because people are at home so much, as Anna said, the, the, the billings for the first two quarters have been significantly higher than what was anticipated based on the two thousand and twenty usage. The, the first billing in August was ten point eight nine percent more usage than the prior year. And the second one in, in November was eight, was seven, almost seven and a half percent higher than, than in the prior year. So the billings related to those, additional billings related to those two quarters are, are going to generate a significant amount of revenues. So while when I, my projection with a seventy-five percent, seventy-five cent rate increase before any bills actually went out, I, I projected that you were just going to either just skim by or, or not quite make your revenue budget with the seventy-five cents. But right now, with the additional billings going up because of the usage, you're projected to come in about three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars over budget. And, and that's before the additional revenues that I anticipate, that are anticipated based on the extra usage in the final two quarters, which, which I expect it will be. So I would, I wouldn't be surprised if at the end of the year, after the, the new, because the projections I'm using now are still using the flat usage for the, the final two quarters. But I, I would project that you're going to come in between five hundred and six hundred thousand dollars over budget at, by the time the, the year ends. So this will generate free cash for the, for the water and sewer fund and it's much needed free cash. But the, the one thing to keep in mind is the, the, the increase in usage does come with a cost. And while usage has gone up, as Anna said, it's gone up in most residential communities, Boston's gone down and your share has gone up. So your, when yours, if yours, if Boston went down and everybody else went, went up equitably, your, your assessment would just remain the same. But that little point one, point one percent that Anna showed you on a slide, it went from point seven three to point seven four percent. If just based on the two thousand and twenty-one assessment, that of, of the entire MWRA, your assessment would have been about eighty thousand dollars higher, just using that point oh one percent difference. And if you look at the budget document for the MWRA, they project a three point six percent. Well, they say, they, they said, the budget document said it should top out at three point six percent a year for the next three years. So that means that their assessments for them, total assessments for their members, they expect will not exceed three point six, it might be less. But that doesn't necessarily mean that every community will be three point six percent. It'll be how your percentage share of the pie changes. So just based, if, if your pie stays at that point seven, that point oh one percent increase, which it's only got one more month, so I expect that that won't change much. That and a three point six percent increase in the overall assessments is, is about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that you could probably get an, an expect for a rate increase, an assessment increase between the water and sewer in fiscal year twenty-two. So when you see like the six hundred thousand or, as, as you see the projections coming in, better than budgeted, I, I think careful consideration has to be done before you do anything like to change the rates downward or, or I think like maybe we don't need to keep these revenues in. Because as, as Anna said, and I said earlier, a problem with, well, it's not a problem, but part of the way the MWRA works is next year's assessment is going to be based on this year's usage. And, and next year, if usage falls down, like many people think it will, a lot, most of the time, most people think that this is an aberration year and, and next year, your usage will drop down to pre-pandemic levels. So if, if it does drop down in fiscal year twenty-two, you're going to have a higher assessment, but your usage will go down. So you'll have less revenues in, during that current year available to pay for that additional assessment. So it's something, so if, after further analysis, you, you, we determined that this was a one-time aberration and it's just a one-time bump in revenues in a one, and, and twenty-two will be a one-time bump in rev, in, in assessments. The town may want to consider that during the two thousand twenty-two budget process, funding some of that big increase by a combination of, of a rate, a, a smaller rate increase than normally would be needed and using some of the free cash that was generated from that big bump in, in two thousand twenty, twenty-one that you're going to have at the end of the year. So you could do that by either just putting money in directly from free cash and, and a rate increase or by putting it into a rate stabilization fund of some sort and then voting it out, out from there somewhere. In general, I don't believe in, in using reserves to, to offset operating costs. But I, I, I think like if we can become convinced that it's a one-time revenue and also a one-time assessment change in, in that, in, in fiscal year twenty-three, the assessments are going to fall back to their normal levels, then I, I, I would think that that wouldn't be, that would be a pretty reasonable approach to take next year. So right now, the revenues are coming in strong and, but the problem is it's, it's going to be, have to be paid for in the next fiscal year. So we'll continue to keep tracking these and, and we, I do look at them every month. But the best time to really get a feel for these is, is just before the next billing goes out. Just as the next billing goes out, because you operate on a cash basis. So that's when I can tell the best when most of, probably most of the people who are going to pay have paid by the time the next bill went out or are going to pay without it being on a lien. So I can, I can kind of do a double test. I can look at, see what you've actually collected in revenues so far and then project forward based on what we anticipate you'll collect on the, the next billing. So I have to answer any questions if I can?
Counselor Christopher?
So I know you, I, I understand why we would be taking that math and projecting it outwards and saying we're going to have another year where we're going to have to pay because we make up a bigger piece of the pie. But I, given that this year is such an, I, everybody expects it to be such an aberration compared to how we were, what projection we were on, would it be possible for us, I think as a policy, you know, as a policy point to go to the MWRA and say, this really isn't a fair way of measuring us going into next year because the world is going to be so different in twenty twenty, FY twenty twenty-one than it was in FY twenty twenty. It just seems like to base a rate off of this, off of what happened this year would be inherently unfair to communities such as ours.
My, I, I really, I, I could only say I don't know. I mean, it's a pretty, it's a pretty big wheel to stop turning, you know, the way that they, they, I mean, because for every, every town that is going up, somebody else is going down. And so, I mean, they would make that argument that they, they made efforts to conserve more and should be rewarded for that. And so I, I, my answer is I, I wish I, I wish I could tell you, but.
Counselor Christopher, just to provide some additional feedback on your question and the town manager may have some thoughts on this as well. But I think, I think it's fair for us to reach out to the MWRA to inquire about how they are evaluating the situation because I think the decisions that they made last spring, you know, were informed as our, ours were similarly at that time for any budget decisions that were being made on the information we had available at that time. And so, you know, it's unclear if there is, I don't, it's unclear if they have evolved in any thinking in terms of the sort of, you know, the votes that they took last spring on the, and, and how things have sort of progressed in light of the trajectory of COVID nineteen and the associated financial crisis, you know, that may have lasted longer than what had initially been anticipated. And so I don't, you know, I think your point is a good one that there is, is there sort of just questions to be asked there of them in terms of, are they, you know, reevaluating any of these, any of their processes? Would we be able to necessarily change it? I don't know to Dick's point, but I think it's certainly fair for the, fair for, you know, town management to inquire with the MWRA about how they're evaluating the decisions that they made and how they set the rate in light of kind of where things are.
I mean, it's absolutely worth asking the question. I mean, I, I would, you know, I would absolutely ask it. And, and I'm sure that many communities that are in your, in Winthrop's position will ask. And, and it's possible that you just don't know what kind of stimulus money could come out and maybe they'll have some money to be able to, you know, shrink assessments kind of the way they did. They did shrink assessments this year, less than the rate increase that they had projected. So I guess it's, we'll have to ask.
Vice President Luttey?
Thanks, Council President. Thank you, Dick, for the presentation. Couple of questions on lost water and build water, like the town pays for all the town water used, the residents pay.
Yep.
Correct? So all the water used at the schools and town hall and DPW if I have a place. So that uses has to be incredibly down. I mean, we've had, you know, two thousand students that haven't used the bathrooms, they use the hand washers basically in seven months out of the eleven so far this year. You know, town hall hasn't been utilized near to its capacity, library, senior center. So that, and that will come back. Now, do we know how much water we're down in usage in public buildings?
I, I don't think that we've done that in that, yeah, but that's, that's because it's being that use, that same use, the same people are using that amount at home, you know?
That's exactly right, and that's my point, that you're going to have that same usage in a lot of respects. But I'm not sure, and, and just a supplement on that, and then maybe Steve and Anna can weigh in too. On the lost water, I mean, obviously we've had a ton of construction going on with the, with the center and stuff. And I'm sure during that process, there's some lost water just with breakages and stuff like that. But have we, has our lost water number come down at all to be more in line with other municipalities?
It's, it's still high, Steve, isn't it? I mean, it's, where they want you to be at is ten percent and it's.
Yeah, we're, we're well over ten percent. Our, our unaccounted for right now is probably in the range of eighteen to twenty percent. The, the, the thing is this, I mean, our total consumption, which is what our, what our assessments are based off, our, for, for calendar year two thousand nineteen, our total consumption was about four hundred and fifty million gallons. Our, our total build was only about three hundred and thirty-two million gallons. So that equates to about twenty percent, you know, less water. And, and that's really going forward is, is what we got to focus on, in my opinion, is that lost revenue. Cutting down that unaccounted for, absolutely right. Going to, to Counselor Luttey's question about the schools and, and the different public buildings, a lot of those properties, and Anna, you can correct me if I'm wrong if the policy has changed, but most of that usage gets abated anyways, those typically aren't being billed. So it's, it's typ, it's essentially non-billed usage. The, the community as a whole is up this year about six point six percent, uh, uh, usage is, is up. So you know, I've been doing this for, for, for almost fourteen years now and, and dictating the, the assessment or being able to change the assessment is probably a, a, you're not going to be all that successful in, in how MWRA is going to calculate that assessment. What we do got to remain committed on is, is the, the, the infrastructure, the water breaks, you know, add to the unaccounted for water. Millions of gallons a year are lost to, to, to water breaks, just leakage now. MWRA for our, our permit requires us to do a, a full system leak detection every two years. We're doing it twice a year, right? We're, we're very, very aggressive on, on finding leaks and, and, and fixing them. But for every seepage leak that you fix, one water break blows it out of the water. I mean, by the time you isolate, you're losing millions of gallons of, of water and that's lost revenue. So we really got to stay committed to, to fixing the infrastructure. And what scares me in the, the position that I'm in is we have already used our MWRA funding ability with the zero percent loans for, for water main repair through two thousand twenty-eight. So the fact that we may have a little bit of, of retained earnings in that enterprise fund is a necessity. These, you know, the, these improvements can't stop until two thousand twenty-eight. And really, our debt service is only, is, is much less than what our lost revenue is for our unaccounted for water on an annual basis. So my recommendation is to stay the course, stay committed to the, to the infrastructure improvements and, and get that, that unaccounted for water down to where Dick says it should be. And I agree wholeheartedly, you know, in that ten to twelve percent range.
Just to, just to follow up too, I know that for years we used to say, you know, eighty percent of our infrastructure is eighty years or older. And we've done a ton of work, but still, you know, it's a small percentage considering the amount of miles of piping we have under the ground. I'm assuming, and Steve, you could correct me, that we're still probably seventy percent of our infrastructure is eighty years or older. I don't know if it's that much better than that or not, but can you elaborate on that?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I, I think you're right. So there's forty-six miles of pipe in the ground. You know, this system is about a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty years old. And it had about a hundred year lifespan. So we're, we're just catching up. I mean, the, the system has to continue to be, to be upgraded. I mean, the, the system has to continue to be, to be upgraded and, and repaired. As aggressive as we've been, and we've had a water main project since, since two thousand seven, every year, we've had something going on since I've been in, in, you know, in my position. And, and we've been super aggressive. But of those forty-six miles of pipe, if, if, if we've taken care of, you know, eight to ten miles of it, which is a lot of pipe, you still got a ways to go. And we'll continue to be, to be committed and diligent to, to, to maintenance and repair. But it, it's a, it's a, like any mechanical piece of equipment or any mechanical thing has a lifespan. And if you ignore it, those water main breaks and, and that seepage is what's gonna get you on the unaccounted for water and the lost revenue. Again, eighteen percent unaccounted for water is over two million dollars of lost revenue every year. So it adds up.
And if I could just add briefly to just also the water main breaks and just to further underscore the necessity of making infrastructure improvements is that when we have those, we have, there's an insurance cost associated with that. We have high deductibles right now because the town had to renegotiate its insurance because we had so many losses that our insurer, you know, we had to go out and procure our insurance and we face very high deductible. So when we have damages, when we have water main breaks and we have your backups, that, you know, I, I was just trying to pull up our deductible really quick, try to remember at the top of my head. I think it may actually be twenty-five thousand dollars for water main breaks, you know, per occurrence. And so that cost adds up. And so to the, you know, you're losing water when those happen, you're losing what, you're losing the revenue as, as Steve just says, when that happens. And then we're also having to pay for costs associated with the repairs that could occur because of the event. And so it's sort of, the cost is happening one, on one end or the other. You know, either making the cost to repair the infrastructure or where we're losing money on, you know, water main breaks and, and on, on, on both those deductibles and. Re- lost revenue.
Can I just, can I just add something? I, I, I think it, you're kind of in a conundrum because the, the, in, in my opinion, like, if I was gonna point in one direction, I, I, I would say that trying to figure out the, the lost, get it down to ten to twelve percent lost revenue. But that costs money first, it costs money as a study. And then, then what they're gonna find is gonna cost you money to fix. So it's, it's like, it's, it's, it's a long-term solution, but it's, it's, it's gonna cost money to, to make the correction. So it's, 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 it's kind of, you know, it costs you money to, to make the money. But that means you have to change the rates to raise the money to fix it, you know? So it's a, it's a tough, it's a really tough situation. And, and it, right now, I think that a lot of places that I, that I'm dealing with are having a lot of issues with water rates. Because, because there's a lot of EPA requirements and state requirements on, on, on lead line, lead line test replacement. And so there's just a lot of costs from the wealth.
Okay, thank you, Jack, Councilman Jero.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hinkston, and thank you, Anna, for the presentation. I just wanna level set and go back to something that we talked about. Just in terms of projecting water usage and how that plays into determining our rate. You know, we talked about, and I agree that this year was an anomaly. We used more water, each, each household used more water this year probably than ever before. But I'm not sure if it's, if it's reasonable to assume that next year, those water rate, those water usage levels will go back to what it was pre-pandemic. I, I think what might be more realistic is something sort of in between, just I think that, you know, society has proven that, that working from home can be effective. I know a lot of big companies in Boston, for example, are giving up their commercial space and they're downsizing the, the other offices. So I just wonder if you could comment on that and, and just maybe remind me, and maybe I misunderstood, how that projection will play into the rate?
No, I, I, I think that's, you're a hundred percent right. I think that it, it, if, if people do end up staying home, that's why I said if you're convinced that it, it's a one-time change in the assessment. I mean, we have to become convinced of that by, and you'd have to see that the usage went down in order to convince yourself of that. But even at that, if, if, even if you used more and if you use less more than other places, then you're okay. If you, if you like, instead of being, being seventy-four percent, point seven-four percent of, of the, the entire M W R A, you went down to being point seven-one percent of the entire M W R A assessment, but still used more water? Then you, that's, that's a win for you. So you can use more water as long as you use less more than somebody else and the, the other members, the residential communities.
Okay.
It, uh, may I just add one thing to Counselor Jero's question? And I think, I think it's, I think it's a very, I think I agree with you completely accurate point. I think what we'll need to do with further analysis over the next couple of months is see if we can quantify to the best of our ability. Is there, can we at least potentially call a portion of it one time? Do we, can we find a comfort level where we can say, not all of it's one time, but maybe we can say thirty percent of it, maybe half is one time? And then we can quantify that one-time piece and potentially work out if we can figure out if there may be some sort of like, you know, rate relief kind of situation that we could conceptualize for next year? If we can kind of land on what's our comfort level with that? So it doesn't disrupt this sort of rev- the revenue and the rate setting for next year.
Because if you don't, if you don't, if you try to fix it all with, with, with like the free cash, if you get an extra six hundred cash and you try to fix it all with that and, and your assessment doesn't go down, then, then all of a sudden the next year you have to make up for the six hundred thousand dollars that you used plus. You know, so, and, 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 you know, like, like the, we're out, the first few months of the next calendar year are still gonna be people at home. You know, the first several months, so then that's gonna, so it's not, it's like you said, Steve, it's not gonna drop immediately. It's like, kind of wane itself down. But, and it might be, you know, this, like they say, in the second, third quarter, plus we'll go down some. And so it's, 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 it's a measuring that we'll have.
Sure, and, and so estimating what that new normal will be, I, I think that's, that's the challenge. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for our Vice President Luteri? And if you see me block out, unmute yourself, please. If you see me knock off, take over.
All right, okay, just a quick follow-up with Steve and Dick on two things. Well, if Steve, if you could just give a quick update on the new water meters and, and how that's going and where we stand. And just clarify me, did you say that all public buildings get abated by M W R A for water usage?
Not, not M W R A, it's been the town's policy. And again, I don't wanna speak out of bounds here, Anna, if we've been doing something different. But the schools and most public buildings that I don't have water bills built into their budgets, and those typically get abated. So although it's metered water, it's un, it, it becomes unbilled. So you, you lose the revenue for that.
So it's basically part of that eighteen percent lost water, correct?
No, it's not unaccounted for, it's just unbilled.
Well, it's, it's metered, all the buildings are metered.
It's billed and abated.
Right.
It's.
Yeah, we actually, we get, we get bills in, so we are still doing it that, some communities do it this way, some communities build it into the, the, the department's budget. And there are, there are pros and cons of both. And we think having an additional study on that will help inform what makes the most sense for, for Windsor if we need to make a change there.
Okay, and just on the meters, Steve?
Yeah, so we, we continue to, to do the meter project of the forty-six or just under forty-six hundred accounts. At last count, we had about twelve hundred meters left to install. So we're over two-thirds through it. Uh, again, I mean, we, we, we work on it as, we're committed to it, we stay on it. COVID slowed us down a little bit with entries to homes, but we, we will continue and hopefully by the, you know, within the next year and a half, they'll, they'll, they'll be fully installed. All the large meters are, it's, all we got left now is, is, is residential, all the commercial meters have been installed. They were the first phase of the project. And I'm optimistic that, you know, once we get these, these remaining meters in and, and no one wants to speak to water theft or anything like that, but it, it happens. And it's typically the people that give you the most resistance about getting in their homes to change things out, uh, 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 where you find, you know, some of the issues. So we'll stay on it and, and we wanna get through it as quickly as possible. It certainly has helped this new meter, radio read system and certainly helped with customer service. We can see things in real time. We can notify people when, when we notice high usage leaks and, and we've saved a lot of people, a lot of money by, by notifying them of, of a running toilet that they're not even aware of. So it certainly was a worthwhile project. We saved a lot of money doing it in-house. It's gone a little bit slower than, than we, we, we hoped, but.
And old meters don't run true, they, old meters don't.
They don't run fast, everything slows down.
Everything slows down. So if you use a hundred thousand gallons, you might only be billing up. That's good for the community, but then that means if somebody gets a new mill, new meter, it's gonna bill, a higher bill.
Yeah.
A truer bill, so.
It's a truer bill, but yeah, it's, it, when we, and we have, you know, again, the software is wonderful. You can show people, you know, real-time usage and show them history of usage, but they will typically when the new meters go in, the bills typically go up. Cause they are reading, you know, they're reading a lot more accurate. And on, on the slow usage, you know, it's not missing those tenths of a gallon. It's, it's picking up everything, they're mag meters, there's no moving parts. So there's no pistons to slow down or anything like that. So it's, again, it, all in all, i- it's been, it's been a great project, it's, it's wonderful for the town. But we just gotta, we, we gotta get through it and finish it up.
Thank you, Stephen, and thank you, Dick and Anna. I'm gonna ask you to just stay on, Dick, because they're gonna open up public comment period now. And just in case some questions that I can't, or you can't answer, I'd like to have you stay on. It should not be a long public comment. Do we have anyone on public comment ready?
Their hands up, up, I take that back.
Yeah. Rodriguez.
Yeah.
Leo, are you on?
I am on.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, Leo Rodriguez from Precinct Three. I actually have a question, because I know how this works on the federal government side, since I work for the Office of Contracting for the Air Force. How does this work at the local level? So I know that we have all these current infrastructure projects and replacing, repl- replacing the lead pipes and so on, sewage issues. And so, so when these RFQs go out and everything gets awarded and a contractor gets selected over on the Air Force side, for example, we actually have an office of pricing that they actually go over the entire project that the contractor's doing. And they make sure that we're getting billed a reasonable price. So they go over, say, in the Air Force side, if we're gonna buy a fighter jet, they go over what did the, what did the contractor use for the project? Materials, the labor, how many engineers were involved? The levels of engineer, whether it was low-level engineering, high-level engineering, hours into the project? And what a reasonable profit for that contractor is for a project of that size? So I was wondering, at the local level, is there something that exists like that at that level? Or is, or does that not really exist? Thank you.
Does anyone have an answer for that? Anna or Steve, Steve probably deals with them.
Yeah, I can, I can give a very brief high level, and then I think Steve might be able to give some detail specific to public works projects. But in general, when we have a project that requires an RP or just, you know, any sort of expenditure, the town follows the state procurement guidelines for how we go out to bid on those projects based on the thresholds that are involved and following the very, you know, the, the strict bid process that is required by the state. I think Steve may be able to better kind of discuss sort of how we evaluate bids that come in for a public works project.
So we have to be very clear with specifying the scope of the project. So everybody's bidding on the same thing. So we actually create the bid tab, the bid items. So in other words, I know you gave an example of a jet and there might be, you know, ten different ways to build a jet and whatever, whoever can get there, the, the, you know, I don't know that you specified the, the exact material and things like that. On the municipal level, we do, we, we tell them that the type of fitting, you know, the, the, the type and size of a copper, you know? So we're very specific so that everybody's bidding on, on the same bid items. And we do go with the, the low bid, as long as it's, you know, within a certain parameter. I mean, if, if, if it's fifty percent less than everybody else, you know, we will certainly review that to make sure that, one, their calculation's the right and that it's even feasible for them to do the project. But we, we do take low bid. And we always have a, an engineer involved that, that gives a construction estimate, pre-bid. So we have a range of where the, where the project should come in. And, and then we obviously have a, a, a review process afterwards where, where we're actually, you know, do background checks on, on the vendors and, and, and previous projects. So it is a very precise procedure and, and we do follow the, the state and federal procurement laws.
And most of the projects have a clerk of the works that's watching the project, right, Steve?
On some of the larger, CBD, we did construction administration, you know, smaller projects, we will, we will oversee in-house. But again, it's a very specific quantity-based, you know, overview and, and, and we're on it. So there's not like they, you know, there's extra charges that they, that they can add without, you know, the whole change order procedure and, and getting that approved.
Okay, thank you, Steve. I hope that answers your question, Leo, who I think is off, and I think Kurt Malara's on.
Good evening, how's everybody doing?
Good evening, Kurt.
I just have a, kind of a quick question. Have we identified for that twenty-nine percent of the department expense, any cost savings or loss elimination within that?
Where's that, it's at here?
Um, yeah, I, I think I, I can speak to that. And I think also in collaboration with Steve, so, with Director Calla. So we, we do take, every year through the budgeting process, Director Calla, in meetings with me and the town manager, leading up to the town manager's budget presentation, we really go over, you know, every single expenditure in great detail. We, for example, and then we work with the finance committee each year through the budget process to answer all their questions about the, the line items and the expenses that roll up into those line items. So I, I, you know, I, I feel strongly that we are, you know, that we are, that that, that the expenditures in that department are, are efficient, are efficiently budgeted. And I think, I know Steve could speak to it more detailed, just being the, the person that directly oversees all those expenditures. But we, one thing very specific to, to note was that in the town manager's budget, there's, there's, there's a certain line that we had booked to increase a little bit more to help deal with some of, some unexpected potential infrastructure projects that could come up. But in light of sort of COVID nineteen and where we were with concerns about, you know, managing the rate increase in a, in a, as, as fair and equitable manner as we could. Steve and I went, Steve and I literally went back to the drawing board. I think we had a meeting a full, like a full hour with he and I, like kicking the tires on all the, all the inputs in, in that particular budget. And we took twenty thousand dollars off from one of the lines. So that we came back, when we came back to the, to the finance committee, we said, you know, we feel comfortable about taking this off. Because we, we do really try to ensure that everything's as efficiently budgeted as possible.
Can I just say, I, I, I believe that absent the increase in the assessment and, and like, and some other, was it the debt or something else like that? Absent the, those increases, the budget went down in, in all the other line items in, in, from twenty to twenty-one in the sewer, water sewer fund.
Yeah, I don't know that we could be any tighter o- o- on, on, on the budgeting of this enterprise fund. I mean, look at my budget reports in front of me right now and we're not even, you know, to mid-year, we're close to mid-year, but we're tracking at about sixty percent incumbent or expended in most lines. So again, there, there's a lot of work going on. There's been, you know, probably eight or nine significant water main breaks within the first half of this year that we, we've had to de- deal with. And I don't, and, and Anna's right, I mean, we went through, we go through every budget with a fine-tooth comb. And I don't really see anywhere that could, that could be, you know, any lines that could really be, be cut much, much more, you know, without losing service in certain, certain.
Thank you, guys. Is there, answered your question, Kurt, or is there? Thank you, guys. Is there, answered your question, Kurt, or is there anyone else waiting to speak on public comment? Do we have anyone else?
I don't see any other hands up.
Seeing none.
Uh, I'm sorry, Karen Chavis?
Yes, I see Karen. Welcome, Karen.
Hi, dear. I'm just gonna be a little bit repetitive here. I guess I'm not understanding the usage. I understand that the residential usage has increased because people are home. But why would the school and the public building usage not be decreased because there's nobody there? And if MWRA is using the usage to base our assessment on, why would our assessment, if not be level funded, not be increased?
Karen, our, our, our usage as a, as a community, as, as uh, as a whole, is up six point six percent. Um, if I confuse things with, with uh, you know, talk, speaking to the school and public buildings, I was just trying to answer Councilman Terry's question as to um, you know, basically, i- i- if, if the usage is down in those buildings, does it, does it change things i- in the, in the big picture? And, and it's, it's those things that, that, that get abated anyway, so uh, the, but the usage as a community is up six point six percent, and as the assessment is based on, on the total usage.
So even with these other buildings closed, we still use six point six percent more water?
That, that's correct, because people are home all day in their homes, uh, instead of going to work like Anna was alluding to of, you know, if thirty percent of people in Winthrop, a- and, and this is just a, I don't know what the number is, work in Boston, but now they're working out of their homes, that, you know, Boston's not, they're not using Boston water, they're using Winthrop water.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Anyone else on the public comment? Larissa?
Yeah, yep, we have uh, Victor.
See Victor?
Hello, Consulors, this is Victor Imperato with uh, P- Precinct Three.
I have a couple of, a, a couple of quick questions, um. Number one, you know, the community as a whole, our water rates, our water bills, and in the time that we're living in right now, it's crazy. And there's a lot of families out of work. You know, their uh, uh, water bills are very high. I've lived in numerous c- communities. Uh, I've never seen water bills as high. Um, so my first question is, is there assistance for families that can't afford their water bills? I have some neighbors, I consider myself pretty lucky, uh, just me and my wife that live in a small house on the point. And our water bill is uh, a lot less than some of my neighbors. Some of my neighbors received water bills over a thousand dollars. And they don't live in extravagant homes. So is there assistance for people that can't afford their water bills? Uh, I, I usually pay my water bill, you know, the whole amount, but if somebody's got a water bill that's over a thousand dollars, I mean, that could break my, my monthly bank, and I'm sure it's hurting some families out here. So that's question number one. You can answer that if you'd like.
So I think, Council President, I think I can, um, I can answer part of that. Um, so some communities have a purchase waiver, um, involved with, um, we don't have that at this current time associated with our rate, but I believe it's something that we would like, um, to have an outside consultant inform us about how that would impact the underlying rate structure. So if we were, um, further reducing rates for, uh, for some, how that affects in general the rate and where it would need to be set. I think if there are folks that are struggling to pay, um, to pay their bills, I, if folks, um, please feel free to reach out, um, to us, and so we could help identify potentially, um, available resources if they may qualify for certain other, uh, programs that could be out there. I'm happy to, uh, work with folks on, um, looking into that, um, on case-by-case basis, uh, on a case-by-case basis. But in general, your point about, um, if it, should situations arise where there are hardships, um, there are some communities that have provisions in place, and that, um, I think internally from a town management perspective, we are interested in researching that, um, with someone from, someone externally to determine if that might be something that may be appropriately set up, um, in, in Winthrop as well.
Okay. Also, uh, next question, I know there's a flat rate for MWRA water. What is Winthrop's rate above and beyond the, the MWRA rate? That was not brought up in your, your presentation.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah?
I, I don't know what, um, what their rate is. It's, so what, the way it works is, 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 is like, it's really just kind of an equivalent rate. So they, they, they base it based on a, your percentage of whatever, um, wh- what, whatever the total assessment is, they say, okay, we have to get this a much, and, and we're gonna take it based on your percentage of it. So it, I guess you could break it down to a, to a per gallon, but I, I have not done that.
Okay, because I, I've, I've seen, uh, you know, Chronicle shows, and they have things like MWRA, uh, the rates, and they usually wholesale to cities and towns, and then the, the city or town has a rate above and beyond what they sell the water to their, to their community.
Yeah, you're right.
I was just wondering what that actual rate of increase is, so we, so the town makes money.
Yeah, do we have that, Anna? We have that.
Yeah, so just at a high level, um, uh, Victor, he's, he's actually explaining very well sort of this rate structure that, that we're, that we're referencing. So that assessment that we're talking about, that is, that, that is sort of the whole, that is our component of that wholesale rate. And then, so that's fifty-five percent of the delivery of services for our Winthrop's Water Sewer Fund, and then the variance above that is the additional amount that we need to pay for, for our own debt service and our own personnel costs and other associated expenses, um, to sort of manage that, the administration of those services. So I think, I don't know if I can do it really quickly off the top of my head, Dick may be able to do that, but, um, you know, our, the water sewer is, I think, what, it's like five, the assessment from the MWRA is around five point six million, and our budget's around ten point three million, so that variance is the cost that we need to, that then informs the additional rate charge on the Winthrop rate, uh, for Winthrop cost. Just let me know, please explain that better, if you can do that better than I do.
Well, mathematically, if, if the, if it's fifty-five percent, you, you got, your, your rate is twenty-three sixty-five, and if, if the assessment is fifty-five percent of that, then it's thirteen oh one is the, is five percent of your twenty-three sixty-five. Oh.
But if you, i- if you, if you look at total, total usage, Dick, we got four hundred, and we're using, this year with a six point six percent increase, figure we're gonna use four hundred and eighty million gallons for the entire year. If you divide that four, four hundred eighty million gallons by, by your assessed value of, of five point six million, that'll, we can, we, we could work that down. It's, 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 it's well above, tha- tha- that's gonna be well above what we're charging, you know?
Well, I mean, all I'm saying is, if that's, if, if that assessment went away, and all you had to do was cover the other costs, then, you know, like you wouldn't have thirteen dollars and one re- worth of it, worth of those costs, so you know, like, I, I, that's, that's not a per gallon cost for, for what they, they are. I'm just saying that if you took away, if you said, I don't, I don't need to pay that assessment anymore, then, then you could reduce your assessment, you could reduce the rates by fifty-five percent. And, and so you are, you're, your rate would be.
Your twenty-three point six five would go down to about twelve percent, twelve dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
Eleven.
Ten sixty-four, you know, too. Well, that's, that's good to know. Um, and I, I totally get it, and I understand that it takes m- a lot of money to run a city or a town, and I think you're all doing a good job, but, you know, if we don't need to make a killing on a, on a water rate, we just need to keep the town going, you know? And so, um, a follow-up to that is, one of my comments was, can we use the water bill surplus for infrastructure upgrades? Is that something that we could do? If we, if we, Dick, if we can say, you know, we don't need, you know, the six hundred thousand that you have been quoting, uh, and we don't use it, and we don't use it for the wrong things, like a dog park, just throw it out.
Yeah, well, we could use that.
If we don't, if we don't use it,
Within the fund.
If it, you stay within the fund,
Yeah.
and we give that fund to Steve, and he helps him do a infrastructure for, you know, the water main breaks and lead pipes downtown and and all these other, I, we as a community, I don't think we would mind if we're paying a little extra. Okay, but if we're paying a little extra and the money's not going to the right funds, we, we are, as a community, are concerned about that.
I can see Anna chomping at the bit.
Can I, can I, I, Victor, I just, I tr- I truly want to assure you that, that what you're describing is actually how it works now. So the, the Water Sewer Fund is a completely separate fund from our general fund. Um, it is a sort of, it's a separate enterprise fund. Any, any revenues that come in above our budgeted revenues stay with that fund, and they are for the, there, it's actually, it's sort of statutorily described to us how we can use those funds. So those funds are, which is why you do want to not, you do want to ensure that you, that your revenues aren't coming in under budget, because you do want to ensure that you have some money set aside so that we can do these types of infrastructure projects as you're, as you're just describing. And one thing I, I do want to let you know about, and, and the folks in the community to know, that, um, we aren't, we, we are setting the rate so close with such a thin margin. Um, so last year, for example, if there were some expenses that we didn't end up making because of the timing of borrowing related to our CBD project, if we had made those, if we had actually accelerated the timing for some of those, uh, Dick, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we wouldn't have made our budget last year without a further rate increase. We came in under budget for our revenues. And then the year before that, uh, we had to raise the rate, um, I'm sure you recall, uh, you know, but quite drastically by three dollars just to, because we had a deficit to get to the end of the year. And so because the community for a few years was using, um, pre- previously the town had around a million dollars in retained earnings that could have been used for infrastructure projects. But the town, uh, decided to use those to mitigate rate increases for a few years, and because of that, those retained earnings got sent down to basically nothing. Um, and so when, when usage was decreasing, because folks were doing the right thing and conserving, that, as Dick noted, affected our billing and our colle- our, our billing and our collections, uh, to make up for the expenses, so that the rate had to go up to accommodate that, and there was, and because at that point in time, we had spent down those retained earnings, we didn't have anything sitting there to address when we have water main breaks or other, other small infrastructure projects, and so we've been having to go out to borrow for those. And so, um, it's, it's actually, it's fortunate that we actually didn't have, that we, our timing worked out for borrowing last year, that we ha- been able to actually grow our retained earnings now by a bit, so there's a slight cushion there to help with some of these smaller infrastructure projects. And then with this year, um, with folks being at home even more than we had originally anticipated when we budgeted for the rate, it's prompting this conversation with everybody to then say, look, we've, we do have some extra money coming in this year with everyone at home, and we need to sort of make, we need to make a, a call about how we want to accommodate those funds in a way that's most responsible for the Water Sewer Fund and also in a fair way for our rate payers.
Thank you, Anna. Is there a?
Well, we, we appreciate that as a community, that you sharpen your pencil on those rates, and you know, it is unfortunate that we have these breaks, and we have to, you know, find the money to do it, but let's, let's, maybe we could use that fund, our surplus fund this year, and try to ease the pain of, of lending to, to, for these things. Uh, I just wanted to say too, I'm, I'm fairly new to the community. I rented in this community for a number of years, and I actually chose to actually reside here, uh, because I like this, I like this town. Uh, it's a great city to live in. I work in Boston. I'm a professional. I'm an architect for a big firm in Boston. So I know how RFPs and all these things work, and I've been, uh, logging into this, uh, Zoom, uh, the last few, uh, times you've had this, and I really appreciate uh, everybody's time and effort that you're doing. And, uh, I know that your jobs, I mean, you were elected by the people, but your, your jobs are really thankless jobs, and I want to say, do the best you can.
Thank you, Victor.
And, and do.
I'll try.
And we, we'll, we will reward you and appreciate you.
And Victor, if you look at a job that you might like to get involved with, just the applications online, we could always use an architect in one of our committees. So, uh, take a look. Anyone else online? Seeing none. Let's move on to correspondence. Denise, do you have a list of correspondence?
I do. We received several letters in reference to the pledge, of which they do want the pledge to be voted on by the town council without any language changes. And we received, uh, emails from Claire McManus, Julia Wallace, Marsha Janowski, Diana Lalo, Sandra Dale, Beth Saragum, Stephanie Recchia, Charlie Walsh, Allison Casey Duer, Tim Burgers, Susannah Stroman, Max and Sylvia Whiting, Caitlin Burrows, Catherine Bell, and Susan Postel. And that's what I got up to tonight about five-thirty, quarter or six.
Okay, and that is, uh, yeah, all right.
Thank you, Victor. Thank you, everybody.
Stay healthy with us tonight, and, uh, sticking through public comment. Thank you.
My pleasure.
All right. Uh, moving on to committee reports. Do we have a finance committee report?
Do we do? Uh, we met earlier this evening. We had two items on the agenda, one being the, um, one being the motor vehicles that we are going to surplus. There are eight vehicles, which we have positive unanimous recommendation to do, and the other being on the uniformed, um, tax rate, which we also decided to have a positive recommendation for the council. And that was it. We did say that we would be having another meeting, uh, before our next council meeting to discuss more about zero trash and any potential, to, to go over the contract with capital waste, so we could be prepared for fiscal twenty-two.
Thank you, Vice President Terry. Uh, we will take those both up under old business, and we'll move on to Rules and Ordinance Committee meeting.
Thank you, uh, Council President. So we met, uh, this evening at five o'clock, present were Counselor Rogiro and Flock Hat, and we took up, um, Counselor Honan's, um, statement that she had made a couple of months ago about, um, diversity in our community. This, uh, resolution that we ended up drafting was, um, suggested that we take up from the Diversity Committee, uh, which met last week on this. So, uh, one thing that I did want to distinguish was that the, the, uh, statement that Tracy made was her statement, and the pledge that she asked the community or that the town council take, um, was another thing. So there's, so it's not going to be verbatim what Counselor Honan had presented at our, um, at our, uh, meeting a couple of months ago, but the pledge that she asked us to take, um, is going to be intact, a- and that was recommended by the committee unanimously, the pledge that she had asked us to take. Um, so we had drafted one, and it passed out of the committee unanimously, three to zero.
And that will be taken up under old business, and it is in the form of a resolution. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll do that under old business. Let's move on to ten, oh, one other committee, uh, of course, there hasn't been another committee meeting, and a lot of people have been talking about the airport hazards committee, which we lost some people and some, I got some emails about who contacted with a problem with, uh, Massport. And I got a letter today from our representative to the Citizens Advisory Committee, which is Jerry Fabel. He said that they had a meeting, uh, I, on November fourth, he was at the meeting on November fourth. He was fighting for us to get, uh, the resound, uh, proofing on the homes that were done in nineteen ninety-four, and that were accepted to the program, and, uh, Massport is asking the Citizens Advisory Committee to put a freeze on the. Massport is asking the Citizens Advisory Committee to put a freeze on the budget and put off hiring a new. CEO because of the lack of people flying. So FAA has approved that the money uh from the FAA standpoint. Can come in this year, but Massport here is uh having a tough time uh because of the. Limitation on people flying and they've they've lost quite a bit of money, I guess, so far this year. But that's a report from a uh Citizens Advisory Committee on Massport. Uh, there will be further meetings, but right now they're putting a freeze on actually doing the soundproofing and hopefully we get a strong. Uh, Airport Hazards Committee and uh some people apply to be on that so we can start putting some pressure on them. To uh move that freeze very quickly. So please, uh, if if you'd like to be on the Airport Hazards Committee, we uh eat some bodies. Alright, um, moving on Town Managers Report.
Good evening, um, first off, I wanted to ask uh Police Chief Terry Delante to uh come on and uh say. Few words about uh Amy Gallagher, um, he had a very, excuse me, he had a very good relationship with Amy Gallagher. Um, Lisa wasn't unable to join us tonight, um, so I wanted the chief to be able to make a few comments, thank you.
Thank you, Town Manager and um also Council President for your words at the beginning of the night, um, it's certainly a significant loss um. To the family members, friends in the community, um, Amy was always the go to person. Um, for us in the police department, uh, we just reached out to her yesterday. Um, about our toy drive that we will start collecting, well, we have already started collecting toys, but she would be always the one. To identify and help us identify the needy families um in this community. When the COVID hit and Austin came to me and then Meredith and said, let's get a food bank up and running. Um, it was Amy and her assistant sister Ellen that rose to the occasion, helped with Sean and Matt. To get that up and running in two days. It was Amy that ran the Santa breakfast at Saint John's every year. Um, it was Amy who called me every year and said, we have families that can't afford to go on a Washington DC trip. And can we find a way to make make it work to get those families to Washington? Amy and her sister Ellen were the ones responsible for us housing families during the COVID. Uh, families that we would have never known about that were in need in this community. Um, there's so much that she did and she didn't expect anyone to thank her for it. She always rose to the occasion. Um, anything in this community someone needed, she was always there to get it for them. Um, and certainly we were always willing to help and she was always willing to help us. And she'll be sorely missed and certainly a good friend, known Amy my entire life, we have grown up in the same neighborhood. Um, more like a sister um to me and and all my all my family members. Um, but it's certainly a a big void, um, school department has a big void. And more importantly, the needy people in this community that no one would know about because of Amy. Um, we'll have um a big void as well, so thank you for allowing me um to speak on on uh. Behalf of the town and reflection uh for Amy, uh, thank you.
Chief, um, you know, just very unfortunate, um, and a sad day for Winthrop. Um, and you know, it's important that we pay our respects to those who uh. Kind of pulled uh beyond their weight in town and Amy was definitely someone who and Amy was definitely someone who did that as well. She definitely um worked very hard for the town, so she will be sorely missed. Um, next up, I wanted um to give the opportunity for Meredith Hurley uh to give a uh quick update of where things stand in terms of COVID.
Hi, everybody, um, quickly, probably not as eloquently as Chief Delante is, but I feel like we are all. Um, reeling a bit from the loss of Amy, so um, I only got to know her. The last few years, but she always made me feel um like I've been here forever, um. So I I know that the the community is kind of reeling from this one for sure, um. I'm gonna go ahead and share my um my PowerPoint real quick for you guys. Alright, so, no, I shared the wrong one, hold on real quick, I'm gonna try. No, I did, sorry, um. So can you can you guys see that okay? Okay, so. Here we are currently, eight hundred and twenty confirmed cases, twenty five, um, twenty five po- folks have um unfortunately lost their life. There was a uh tw- the twenty fifth individual pathway on November eighteenth. Um, just recently, um, a gentleman with some underlying conditions. Uh, currently, there are seventy seven people isolated and seven hundred and eighteen are recovered. Um, we have seen a huge increase in the use of our testing site. Which continues to be open until December thirty first, we've gotten recent communications and DPH in the form of guidance as to how to stand up. Local testing sites, um, which I, you know, we never seem to know ahead of time what um. What the Commonwealth really is gonna announce, so I'm unsure if they're gonna extend the sites beyond December thirty first. If they don't, it feels a little bit like they're giving us a playbook as to how to do it. Um, so that would be a much more future conversation. With the help of Chief Lanigan, um, we've been able to provide a trailer for the Fallon staff for warmth and shelter. Um, given the cold weather that is coming, um, and in addition, we recently learned in the last few days that the Ed Davis Company. Who was the former police commissioner in Boston has begun to provide support for the traffic flow and work flow. Which has eased a bit of the traffic backups um that we've been seeing. We do expect that our site and sites across the Commonwealth will be just as busy in the week following um Thanksgiving. And then we're gonna kind of, I know the governor's gonna assess what he's what he's planning to do um. Going forward with the with the sites through January. I also want, it was, I've also gone through some of the the usage of the site week by week. So what you can see here is for the total usage, so since we opened in August, we've had twenty one thousand. Nine hundred and forty sites, I mean, twenty one thousand nine hundred and forty tests run at our site. Of those fifteen thousand six hundred and nine were Winthrop residents, so seventy one percent of the tests that were run at the site. Are Winthrop residents, um. Interestingly, we've seen a drop off in in that number, so. Um, for example, the last week in October, seventy seven percent of the tests that were run were from Winthrop residents. And most recently, um, during the height, pre Thanksgiving week. Somewhere between fifty four to fifty eight percent of tests that were run were Winthrop residents. Um, I know that that's a question that we that we get asked a lot. So our incidence rate was released on Friday, we are still in the yellow. Um, our incidence rate that was released last Friday was thirty three point seven percent, which was a decrease. Over our previous week, which was in the fifties, excellent, that we're moving in that direction. Um, we've had uh uh this past weekend, we definitely saw a surge. We um, we had fifty one cases reported between Thursday morning and. In early Monday morning, um, so my estimation for our incidence rate for this coming week will be around. Thirty eight to thirty nine percent based on the number of cases, which would have been a hundred and one. Between November fifteenth and November twenty eighth. I also wanted to mention that we have a food clinic that is coming up this Saturday, it's gonna be held at Memorial Gymnasium. At the old middle school um from ten to two. We've set up appointments using the Parks and Rec website that folks, if they already have an existing profile, can go on and. In um, in in clean times between ten and one, and then we're gonna be doing a walk up from one to two. Currently, we have about a hundred IM injection injectable um vaccines. But I'm expecting if the universe works with me to have an additional hundred and fifty by Friday so that we have two hundred and fifty. Um, injections able to get give out plus an additional fifty. If anybody has any questions, they are welcome to call the EOC um at six one seven five three nine five eight four eight. Um, and we can help them walk through that process as well. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Any questions? Meredith, thank you for a wonderful job that you do.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Meredith.
Uh, you know, uh, other, I made a presentation last week with the fall forum that brought everyone kind of up to date with things. Um, you know, with uh ramping down some employees working um in town hall and then working remotely. Um, just working through some of the tanks with that right now, um, but otherwise, again, just trying to keep it safe as much as possible. Um, going back to the fundamentals of this in terms of wearing masks, social distancing, um, and keeping your hands clean. So um, with that, um, we can keep moving on along the agenda unless anyone has questions, thank you.
Is there any council, have any questions for Town Manager? None? Don't see everybody on, but, okay, we'll move on, uh. School Department report, of course, school uh committee did not meet this past week. Uh, everything is the same, nothing has changed. Their plan is to go back to school no sooner than January fourth. And hopefully, uh, we will be ready and that will occur right after the holidays, alright, um. Moving on to old business. Uh, I gotta call on Vice President Luteri uh with two motions, uh, number twelve A and twelve B.
Thank you, Council President, I have two motions out of Finance that both have positive recommendation. The first, I move that the town council declare as surplus the following vehicle inventory. These are all from the DPW department, um, it is a nineteen eighty six Ford tractor. Uh, number F three seven four nine, a nineteen ninety international forty nine hundred dump truck. Uh, license plate number M four three five one six, a nineteen ninety six Chevy GMT four hundred pickup truck. Um, license plate uh M nine eight one uh three eight seven. A nineteen ninety seven Chevy K thirty five hundred dump truck. License plate number M five two seven zero seven, uh nineteen ninety eight Chevy Astro van. Uh, license plate number M ninety five, seven ninety eight. A two thousand Chevrolet K thirty five hundred pickup truck. License plate M five three nine zero three. A two thousand Chevrolet K thirty five dump truck, license plate number M five three. Nine zero nine and a two thousand five Chevrolet Silverado K twenty five hundred pickup truck. License plate number M four eight three one one, thereby authorizing the treasurer collector to post for sale. Through an approved auction site or take any other action relative thereto. These vehicles have been behind the old DPW building, um, this was a a lot of this. Thanks to Consul Farino uh and Director Calla for bringing this to our attention and. And um, having a cleanup of some of the inventory that's there.
Thank you, uh, motion has been made since it's coming out of committee, it does not need a second. The motion is to declare eight uh former DPW vehicles as surplus and allow the treasurer to sell them. Uh, all those in favor, are there any questions on it, are there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please uh signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Counsel Rogiro.
Yes.
Counsel Flock Hat?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Christopher?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaCanti?
Yes.
Counsel Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Garry should unanimously, uh, second motion.
Thank you, Council President, a motion that the town council maintains a uniformed tax rate. For all classes of property for fiscal year twenty twenty one. Authorized Town Manager Faizan to sign and electronically submit the LA five to the Department of Revenue. And the town council approves electronic signature to this document on behalf of the town council. This also came out of committee with a unanimous positive recommendation.
Okay, this is actually two uh motions that we are taking as. First is to maintain the uniformed tax rate and the second is to allow it to be uh an electronical. Si- signature account to be set up, so. Do we take a separate vote for each of those, Anna? Okay, we do it with.
Under a single motion, I think you can.
No, it's it's a single motion, actually two actions. One is to s- set the rate and the second is to approve the electronic signature, so.
As far as I can recall, I think it's been done as one, I think it's been done as one vote in previous years, I don't know if I can quickly pull that up, but I think it's okay to. Just to vote it as one.
Okay, alright, then we will do it as one, all uh those in favor, uh, first, is there any discussion on it?
Just with clarification, this is again something that we discussed in Finance, it's something that we discuss every year. Um, we've had many comments throughout the years from residents, um, looking at the opportunity to have a split tax rate like other. Uh, bigger cities like Boston would have, um, we have such a small commercial base in Winthrop and. This had been done, I think, two years, maybe ninety five and ninety six. It did not work out very well, the town went back to a uniformed rate. Um, basically, if we were to go to a split rate for a commercial and residential, the average. Uh, residential payer would save under ten dollars a year and the average commercial. Um, owner would pay ru- between four hundred and four hundred and fifty dollars extra. So we didn't think there was enough savings, are they, uh, you know, as a as a town, we have not seen a substantial need. Uh, in this extent, a substantial savings for the rate payers to to do a split rate. And we feel the uniform rate is is perfect for one at this time.
Alright, any discussion on it? Hearing none, again, the motion to set a uniformed tax rate and to set up an electronic signature account. So we don't have to sign this form for you. All those in favor, say signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Counsel Rogiro?
Yes.
Counsel Flock Hat?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Christopher?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaCanti?
Yes.
Counsel Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Motion is carried, passed. Alright, we move on to uh rules and ordinance, twelve C. A Counsel Honan's pledge, which I believe she rewrote tonight, is that correct?
No, um, uh, sorry, I worked with um Pete Christopher, I didn't, um. He just made it into a motion, but he took my original language.
Yep, thank you, um, so yeah, like like Tracy had just alluded to, um. The committee had offered, had drafted up a resolution that the town council would in turn pass. The language all uh derived from the statement that uh that Tracy had given a couple of months ago at the council meeting. Um, before I offer the resolution that the committee came up with, I'd like to um thank the committee on inclusion, diversity and community. Community relations for making the resolution, um, I uh recommending that we make this resolution. Um, I think it sends a signal that we are seeking their input and that when that committee speaks, that we will listen to what they have to say. Um, and that I hope that they will continue to seek out ways that um. We can operate on municipality more equitably and uh, you know, make our c- uh community a more inclusive place. And I'd also like to thank uh and commend uh Counsel Honan for her statement without her leadership. Um, we would not be talking about this right now. And so the resolution that I'd like to offer is um the following. I move that the Winthrop Town Council adopt the following resolution, whereas we hold these truths to be self evident, that all people are created equal. And whereas Winthrop is a resilient and diverse community of people in race, culture and gender identity, and we must. And we must continue our work together toward an anti-racist and anti xenophobic Winthrop. Resolved that the Winthrop Town Council strives to be a body that rejects hate in our community, that recognizes diversity as a source of pride and strength. That recognizes that black lives do matter, that recog- that values freedom to worship who we choose and love who we choose to love. Be it further resolved that these values should not ever be disparaged. Be it further resolved that all are welcome to live their lives in peace and acceptance within our community and that we are stronger together.
Since this came out of committee, it does not need a second. And this is a resolution that. We put forward to unify our community. All right, I believe everybody has heard it, everybody has received a copy of it. Is there any discussion on it from people that were not on the committee or people that were on the committee? Hearing none?
No, I just want to speak in favor of this. I voted for it in committee and. I'm preparing to vote for it again right now. I, I think that we, we did a great job here in following the process by, by having our diversity committee opine on this. And again, I'd just like to thank them for their work. I'd like to thank Counselor Honan for her leadership. And, you know, the one thing that's wrong with this is that we waited until December first to do it. That's, I think, the one fault here, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Regero. Anybody else want to be heard? All those in favor of this inclusionary resolution, please say aye when your name is called.
Counsel Regero?
Yes.
Counsel Placat?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Christopher?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaCanti?
Yes.
Counsel Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
I would like to see that we get this published and put it into the transcript as even if it have to do with an ad. I think it's a positive statement and it needs to be put out there publicly. So people know that we are committed to making Winthrop a better and more inclusive place. Thank you, councilors. Moving on, I believe we are down to. Positions and appointments on the new business. Under new business, I have the following citations that I would like the council to approve. And there are two, two retired members of the advisory committee, I'm going to read one. But there, there are two. Be it known to all that the town of Winthrop and the Winthrop Town Council hereby office its appreciation to Robert Winn. Citizens Advisory Committee on Finance. On behalf of the residents of the town of Winthrop, we send our most sincere gratitude for all your past devotion and commitment. To the Citizens Advisory Committee on Finance. And wish you well on your resignation. We offer you nothing but the best in all of your future endeavors. Bob Winn has served for well over twenty-five years on the Citizens Finance Committee since that's been an exception. But before that, on the advisory committee, the Red Book Advisory Committee to Town Meeting. And I believe that the second person, Barbara Flavin, has also been there since the Red Book Town Meeting days. And they are both going to be missed and tough shoes to fill. And I will be making appointments to those positions in a few minutes. But I would ask these two citations for the Citizens Finance Committee for Bob Winn and Barbara Flavin be approved. Jim, is the gavel?
To approve those, absolutely. I will pass the gavel. Thank you. A motion by Council President, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor Christopher, any discussion on the motion?
I, I would just like to say, I, I, when I served on the finance committee, both of these individuals were excellent to work with. And I know especially Bob, as the chairman of that committee, did just such an excellent job. And his mastery of the budget will sorely be missed in this community.
Anyone else? I will also echo Counselor Christopher's comments. I've had the pleasure of working with Bob and Barbara for the past fifteen years on Citizens Finance Committee. And Bob is a one-of-a-kind leader, a true gentleman and extremely eloquent and, and a, and a huge loss for this town and his service. And Barbara is a pillar of excellence in her work ethic. And it's been a pleasure working for her, working with her for the past fifteen years as well. Seeing no other comments, I will.
Well, just one more I'd like to add, Jim. They also were involved in the advisory board at town meeting. And I was on there for twenty-five years and they both were there and I think they were there longer than that. So I'd like to add to the fifteen years that they helped the council and also the twenty-five that they facilitated their wisdom at town meeting.
Well said, Consul Farino. I would ask for a aye vote at the, as your name is called. Denise, unmute Denise.
Counsel Regero?
Yes.
Counsel Placat?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Christopher?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaCanti?
Yes.
Counsel Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
And Council President, I hand back the gavel.
Oh, hold on, wait, okay. Hold on, because I have three more citations that I would like people to approve. And these are for the retiring members of the Airport Hazards Committee. And they read, town council citation, be it known that all town of Winthrop and Winthrop Town Council. Hereby offer its appreciation to the first one, Gina Cassetta. Chair of the Airport Hazards Committee. On behalf of the residents of the town of Winthrop, especially our neighbors at the Point Shirley area. We extend our most sincere gratitude for your guidance, determination and devotion on the Airport Hazards Committee. For the past several years and wish you well in your resignation. We offer you nothing but the best in all your future endeavors. And addition to that, reading pretty much the same. There was one for Josephine Fada for the Airport Hazards Committee. There was one for Linda Caglio of the Airport Hazards Committee. And there was one for Tino Capobianco of the Airport Hazards Committee. These were all hardworking people that helped us make the fight against mass port. And fight so that we could get Catherine Clark to fight with the F A A and get us a approval to get soundproofing done back down. So they're going to be sorely missed and so much appreciated. I understand that one or two of them are online and like to be heard. Denise, do you have someone that's on?
I'm not sure, Tino, did you want to say anything?
If you raise your hand, I can. Here we go.
There he is.
Just wanted to say thank you for the citation and the invite. I'm just taking some courses at Suffolk for grad school, so I'm going to have, be pretty busy. But I'm still looking to be involved on the school committee and, and in town government. And I just wanted to thank everyone for your, your trust in me and your friendship. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Tino. All right, could I have? Okay, so we have a motion from Council President for Gina Facet, Josephine Fada, Linda Caglio. And Tino Capobianco from Airport Hazards Committee for their service and dedication. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Christopher, any discussion on the motion? Again, we thank them for their service and I ask you by signify by saying aye as your name is heard.
Counsel Regero?
Yes.
Counsel Placat?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Christopher?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaCanti?
Yes.
Counsel Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else, Council President?
Yes, I have four appointments to be made. And the first motion is that the town council accept the appointment made by me of Mary Ann Dalton. As a committee member on the Board of Health for the town of Winthrop. Take any other action there too. Mary Ann Dalton is a registered nurse. She lives in Cottage Park Road. She has been very instrumental at East Boston Neighborhood Health Center. And working with specialists at the Winthrop community, part of that neighborhood health center. She's a management staff nurse at B N H C of Boston Neighborhood Health Center. Disease prevention is her priority. She's been dealing with chronic disease management for the past eight years at East Boston Neighborhood Health Center. And I think she would be a great addition to the Board of Health. And she can take play, her place upon the retirement of Susan Maguire. The end of the month and I will have a citation for Susan as well at the next meeting.
Thank you, Council President. There's a motion for Mary Ann Dalton for the Board of Health. Do I have a second on that? Second, I, Counselor Honan, any discussion on the motion? Being none, I will ask for an aye as your name is called.
Counsel Regero?
Yes.
Counsel Placat?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Epstein.
Counsel Christopher?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaCanti?
Yes.
Counsel Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, I have a motion that the town council accept the following two appointments. To be a member of the Citizens Finance Committee. I think we'll do them separately. The first one is Joseph R. Hanlon of sixty-two Ingleside Avenue. Joseph Hanlon is a certified public accountant. He is working right now for HubSpot Incorporated as the treasurer and manager of that place. He got his C P A degree from Bentley and he worked previously for Price Waterhouse. I'd like to put him on the Citizens Finance Committee.
All right, Council President, I have a motion to appoint Joseph Hanlon to the Citizens Finance Committee. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Farino, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask for an aye as your name is heard. Right.
Counsel Regero?
Yes.
Counsel Placat?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Christopher?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaCanti?
Yes.
Counsel Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Council President?
The town council, I have a motion that the town council accept the appointment of Sharon Riley Pullos. As a member of the Citizens Finance Committee. Sharon.
Shannon.
Shannon.
Shannon Riley. Shannon Riley Pullos, she is a C P A. She worked also for Price Waterhouse, but now works for Bain Capital. And she is very involved in the community as it is. And would like to actually be on a committee and try to help make a difference. So I'd ask you to approve Shannon Riley Pullos.
There's a motion to approve Shannon Pullos to the Citizens Finance Committee. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor DeMarco, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask for an aye as your name is read.
Counsel Regero?
Yes.
Counsel Placat?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Christopher?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaCanti?
Yes.
Counsel Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all the appointees, Council President.
Yes, we have just one more.
Okay.
A motion that the town council accept the appointment of Sean P. Dougherty. To be a member of the Conservation Committee. Sean Dougherty is a. Went to Wentworth for Electronic Engineering. He is currently working at Delta Airlines as a personal manager for the international routes. And he is excited about joining the Conservation Committee.
Thank you, Council President. I have a motion to appoint Sean Dougherty to the Conservation Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Farino, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask for a positive vote as your name is read.
Counsel Regero?
Yes.
Counsel Placat?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Christopher?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaCanti?
Yes.
Counsel Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Is that all, Council President?
That is it for today.
Again, I congratulate all the appointees and, and look forward to their service. Council President, I hand the gavel back to you.
Thank you. All right, we will now open up for our second round of public comment. I want to remind everybody that public comment is for three minutes only. And Counsel Honan is going to keep track of the three minutes, please. And the number to call in is one six four six five five eight eight six five six. And the I D number is eight one nine nine oh eight one oh six six nine. Okay, do we have anyone waiting to be heard on public comment?
At this time?
I don't see any hands up. We must have done everything right tonight.
Oh, everyone fell asleep.
What time is it? Up nine o'clock, it is. All right, seeing no one on public comment. Is there any public relations, upcoming events? Don't forget, there will be the Food Clinic on the fifth. There are openings still for the Airport Hazards Committee. So if anybody is interested to please fill out an application. And I have one opening on the Diversity Committee. So if anyone would like to be involved in the Diversity Inclusion Committee, please fill out an application. And I need applications for the Airport Hazards Committee to keep up the good work of the people who left. Anyone else have any public relations? Counsel Farino first.
Yeah, I just wanted to. Make mention that the Police Department is having a toy drive, drive. And I think the chief alluded to that earlier. And I just wanted to make sure that we all participate and donate some toys, unwrap toys.
Do we just bring them to the police station?
Yes.
Counsel Regero?
I have an event and a quick thank you. On Thursday, the Ordinance Review Committee is scheduled to meet at six thirty, I believe. So I know there's been some growing interest in that committee, so I just wanted to plug it quickly. I also just wanted to give a quick shout out, thank you to both the Chamber of Commerce. And the Winthrop Foundation for lighting up the trees at the Crest Ave Park. That I think was a nice touch to, to the town, a nice touch to Precinct Six. And a big thank you to both of them that was received very positively by the neighbors.
Would like to as well thank the foundation, the Chamber of Commerce for the work they did in, in getting that lit up. And then also the entrance into Winthrop coming in from East Boston. So both ends of town are lit up as well as front, uh, Bedcap Square. So I think Winthrop can smile this holiday season. Anyone else have anything? Hearing none, please be safe. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Made and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye when your name is called.
Counsel Regero?
Yes.
Counsel Placat? Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Christopher?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaCanti?
Yes.
Counsel Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Good night.
I'll say that, Denise.
I'm sorry.
Meeting is adjourned. Please be safe and let's make it through Christmas without another fifty people, please. Please be safe. Bye-bye.
I love it. Denise grabbed the gravel for the gavel.